Good evening, everyone. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of May 12, 2020. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Evening, everyone. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of May 12. Okay, if you have your YouTube on, please turn it off. To join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Or the Panda website could be causing it too, if somebody has that up.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, as I gather the agenda items, and hopefully we'll share it on the screen here. We have a couple of announcements that we would like the folks at home to know. Unfortunately, they're not good announcements, they're cancellations. The Memorial Day Parade, which is a fixture in our community and one of the most wonderful events that we have here, will not be held this year for obvious reasons. We understand that separately, the VFW may do a private ceremony there just to to honor those who serve the country. We've heard from the village of Red Hook on a number of things, one of which is that the Hardscrabble Day Committee has made a determination that there will not be a Hardscrabble Day this year. That is September 12, 2020. I know that date very well because it was the date that I was supposed to walk my daughter down to be married. Unfortunately, that's also being rescheduled until next year. So for the folks at home, Hardscrabble and Memorial Day Parade are canceled. All right, we have here. I'm gonna do a screen share of the agenda for the folks at home. Sue, while I'm doing that, would you like to do your clerk's report?
Sure. Actually, I have two reports because we didn't get to the reports at the last meeting. So I have March and April. For March, total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, $1,590.52. Amount remitted to Ag and Market for their spade and neutered program, $28. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation, $94.48 for a total state, county, and local revenue of $1,713 even. Actually, a good part of that money is, I guess the town was taking money for the garbage on Saturdays, so I had to account for that. So really, $727 of that figure is for the garbage. Okay, April, total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, $4,177.77. And once again, the miscellaneous fee, the large fee, is for garbage that was collected on Saturdays. That was $3,573.75. Amount paid to Ag and Markets, $36. Amount paid to New York State for marriage licenses, $22.50. And amount paid for New York State Environmental Conservation, $94.48 for total state, county, and local revenue of $4,330.75. And that is it.
Thank you very much, Sue. Okay, and while I am working on sharing the screen, just a couple another announcements from the village at their meeting last night. The village voted to reduce their hours going forward for Village Hall from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And so we want to let our village residents know that. Okay, let's see. Do we have that? Share screen. Well, that's not good. There we go. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, this is the agenda for tonight. We don't think it's going to be too long a meeting. We have some financial stuff to cover, coronavirus update, some updates on the Stony Brook Culvert. I know many of you who live up in the northern section of town by Tivoli are wondering what the status of that is. I think we've tried to update you as much as possible, and we have some more discussion tonight on that. Follow up to the social media policies, some thoughts that the town board members may have. Also, we received a CPF recommendation on the Moser application, which is an application, joint application with Senecutson Duchess County and the Town of Red Hook Community Preservation Fund. Purchasing policy recommendations, as you all know, Ted Cudsey, who has been a mainstay here in the Town of Red Hook, is retiring. And one of his wishes for when he leaves, which is very shortly, is that he would like us to make some minor changes to the purchasing policy. And I believe you received those recommendations. We also have a little bit of correspondence. And so, all right, let's just dive in here. And if you would be patient with me, we will go and we will do some of the financials tonight. The supervisor's report, which we have first month, first meeting of every month, and I'll skip to last page, which focuses on the the funds that are available to us at this time. It's the period ending April 30. This is the point in time during the course of the year when we have most of our funds, when we've received the tax payments from January through March mostly. And so the balance, opening balance is $8,225,000. Receipts of $351,000, dispersments of $283,000 for a balance of $8.294 million. Didn't have any particular items come in of note. We did have our franchise fees, we received those as well as the amount for the prior years, and that was less than half. That was anticipated. So it's on a long list that we have to discuss right now of revenues that are not anywhere near budgeted. You also have budget adjustments, which were provided to you by Ann Conway. You have the variance, the monthly variance report that you get each month. And note, I've also provided you with several other data sets you requested that I put together for you, an estimation of what we may expect as far as a change in our financial picture. We talked about the sort of the good news in our beginning report here, which is that the town prior to COVID was in a very strong position. We had healthy reserves. Granted, we do have construction projects that, you know, we're going to have to tap into those reserves for. But we were in a very solid position. And so that's the good news. The bad news, however, is as we start to calculate just what the impact is, and all municipalities are doing this, by the way, we're starting to see them take action now. The the analysis essentially is telling us that our revenue streams, absent the property taxes, are collapsing. Literally, when you look at some of the major revenue generators for our town budgets, sales tax, for instance, is a good example. We have been guided by Duchess County, who collects the sales tax and distributes it according to an agreement that was updated in 2013. We have been guided that, in essence, our sales tax growth factor, which was to make up for reductions in our sales tax distribution years ago. And now, we've just now, these years later, nearly a decade later, gotten back to those sales tax revenue numbers that we had back then. And so we've received in March of this year, a sales tax growth factor of $217,000, which is significant towards the financing of our functions here in town government. And we've been guided by Duchess County not to expect a sales tax growth factor next year, that the reduction in sales tax already will have, you know, a dramatic impact on that number. I've prepared for you, again, working with Ann Conway, on another report here, an estimate of what we might expect for, let's see, is this it here? No, that's not the one. But what we might expect in a loss of revenue sources, and as I pull it up, I'll read it to you. And let's see if it's in here. Oh, it didn't make it. Okay. Sales tax growth factor, loss of $217,000. Certificate of occupancy estimated somewhere around $2,500. Planning board fees estimated $3,000. Interest. And there's another category, you know, we had healthy cash flow, and so we were receiving really good interest revenue. And so what's happened now is because the economy has cratered, the interest rates have cratered as well. So interest rates now on the fund is now a quarter of what it was just three months ago. And so we're going to see a dramatic impact to that. That's a loss of $9,800 in the B and DB funds alone. Building permits, we estimate at least $10,000 loss in building permits. Other governments, Red Hook School District, obviously, we're not collecting money from the Red Hook School District when we're not able to provide them the fields for usage. And so that's a loss of $15,000 per year. And there's also other government revenues of at least $8,000 that we'll be losing. So just in the D and B funds, the money we'll be losing is $266,000 a year. Now, when you include the possibility of not getting the CHIPS funding, that's $183,000. You're looking at, in those two funds, $450,000 in lost revenue. So in the A Fund, we rely on mortgage tax. We anticipate that we're going to be losing $60,000 a year in mortgage tax. And that may be actually conservative. We may lose even more than that because with an economic downturn this severe, typically we see we see that the, you know, resales and new construction slow down. Fines and forfeited bail, a loss of at least $8,000 there. Parklands, $16,000. Interest, $17,000 in the A Fund. And so that's $101,000 there. And then we have the AIM state funding from the AIM, so that's $32,000. Here we go. Here's the sheet I was looking for. So $32,000 in AIM. And so what you have is almost guaranteed. Of course, nothing's guaranteed. Nobody has a crystal ball on exactly what the financial impact will be. But these are rather conservative estimates of the loss, a loss of $367,000 a year. And then if the state is not able to make good on their programs that they've supported us for, the 183 and the 32, that's another $215,000. And so together combined, there's a potential loss just within the next 12 months and then ongoing of a nature that may not be too different than these numbers, of $582,000 per year. And so this has changed everybody's equation for how they are dealing with this on the local level. We're not able to provide the same type of you know, revenues that we thought for our budgets. And so we need to take action to try to stabilize the drawdown from from the reserve funds. And we're doing that also with our capital projects. And so you would ask me to do an exercise of if we had staffing at 75% of the levels that we currently do. And I note that I think in the village, they're looking at less than that right now with their 11 to four. And so that, that impact, and I think there's a sheet here. Yeah, so that impact, when you take into account those changes, and those are in the budget adjustments, the main budget adjustments. Even when you do that, and you look at 2021, and I did just an exercise here to demonstrate to you just how severe this impact is for us in the Town of Red Hook because we relied so much on those revenue sources. So when you look at that 75% staffing levels, you still need to pull each year, and again, this is sort of conservative. This assumes the state, by the way, makes good on the CHIPS and the AIM, that $215,000. If they make good on that, and we only experience the loss of the $367,000, in order to balance the budget next year at 75% staffing levels, we still have to pull that, those amounts of fund balance. We still have to pull over a quarter million dollars from our fund balance and have a 75% staffing levels. And so one of the things that I want to point out to you, which is key to us, is that that's not the only risk that we have is the revenue sources. But it's also in that column taxable assessed value. So we had estimated sort of a conservative increase in the tax base of our community. And that was appropriate, given we were seeing growth, we had a new development in the traditions. And, you know, people were finding Red Hook attractive and moving and building here. Evaluations were showing to be creeping up. And so that was helpful for our tax base. But what happens typically in a recession is that that's the thing that you see that really destroys budgets, is the tax base actually starts to erode. Not only do your revenue sources, sales and mortgage and other, but the tax base goes down. And so you actually have to start charging more folks, more money, just to have the same budget. And in particular, because this is COVID related, we might see, and again, I don't have any particular insight or expertise or crystal ball into that, but we might see erosion of our commercial tax base because those properties may have been impacted by, you know, COVID, especially if COVID ends up being extensive in nature. The valuations of the properties, imagine you own a restaurant building, for example, and now you can no longer use that restaurant to seat 40 people. Ongoing, you can only seat 20 people. So that may be, you know, a valuation issue for those types of properties. So all of these things in conjunction basically speak to the issue that we have to act, and we have to act prudently to preserve and to make sure that we don't get financially in trouble and that we don't see those high reserves that we have become almost non-existent overnight because we have this confluence of construction projects, a sudden and brutal collapse of revenue streams for our budgets, and possibly eroding tax base going into the future. And again, I want to go back to those two points. When we had sales tax levels back in 2010 and 11, it took us a decade to get back to those same levels after that decline. Sorry, prior to 2008, it took us over 10,000, 10 years to get back to those levels. Mortgage tax, our highest year of mortgage tax in the Town of Red Hook was actually 2005. We are not even at the point where we have half of the amount of mortgage tax that we did back then. And so the recovery for that type of a recession took that long. One can only speculate, and again, I don't have any particular expertise, but one can only speculate that the recovery for something this, you know, unprecedented, is going to take a very long time, extended time. And we don't know just how far, you know, these things will fall. So I have supplied you with all that information. And I just can only tell you that it's very discouraging. You know, Red Hook was headed in a trajectory, and I hope that we continue that trajectory forward and very positively. It's a wonderful community. And I think how we responded to this public health emergency only underscores what a wonderful community it is. But we have been hit with some very serious financial challenges, not unlike all the businesses in town have been, not unlike many of our residents have been. But we can't just pick up the next day and have those revenue sources come back online because many of them are predicated on reaching a certain threshold. And so that is why we have in front of us budget adjustments that will across the board and all the departments have staffing levels, you know, until such time as we can we can see our way forward to providing more, more staffing, 75% level. And so those are what those budget adjustments show for you. Anybody have any, any questions? Okay. All right. Very good. Is there a motion to accept the supervisor's report and the budget adjustments? Oh, I better unmute you all, right?
Moved.
Bill, thank you.
Second.
Okay. We have a second. Bill O'Neill, All In. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Bill Hamel.
Hi.
Hi, Christine Kane.
Hi.
Thank you very much. It's very sobering. We will get through this. We also look forward to the day when we can actually see our residents, our constituents, and talk to them. You know, one of the things you'll see in the coronavirus update is that I've extended the no public access, unfortunately, until the end of May, until we get better visibility with this virus. So we will continue to be using the lock drop procedure. You will have the ability to just leave us the documents call if you'd like to in advance, but through the mail slot in the front, and we try to turn it around for you the next day. And so we hope, we hope that we will be able to, in the future, provide you with the same level of service. We do recognize that we may have to limit our hours as well, or limit the amount of services that we can provide. And so we'll be, as things unfold during the course of the year, we will be taking a look at that as well. So with that said, I will move on to the coronavirus update, or at least I think I will. Okay. Let's do a stop share. You all have been very patient with me. Thank you. Okay, now I have what I want to show. If I only could get that stop share screen. Okay, let's see. Let me know if you are able to see this.
Let's see it.
It's up.
Yep, it's up.
Thank you. All right. Not quite a nice one, though. All right, let's see if there's something up. There we go. Let's try that. Okay. All right, Town of Red Hook coronavirus update. You've seen, I'm sure you've seen way too many graphs on flattening the curve, but we are in fact flattening the curve. Flat is really sort of the status that we are in now. We have not seen an exponential increase in the number of cases per day for quite some time now. We do have we do have over 3,000 cases, however, confirmed cases in Duchess County, which is actually more than many of us thought there would be. And as you know, it's anticipated that there are way more folks with exposure to the virus than are actually being tested and confirmed as positive. The New York State Department of Health puts out information daily, and so does Duchess County. Here you can see a chart of how many folks in our county are being tested each day. And then the orange or the pumpkin color is the number of people who test positive. It has been running about 40 per day for quite some time. We're now running closer to 20 per day. Or said another way, we're having a positive test rate of 10%, whereas in the beginning, we were having 20%. We now average about 17 as a whole. Where we are is the governor and Duchess County have been working hand in hand, and so has your local government, I should say, in trying to prepare for reopening businesses. And so May 15, certain regions qualified for reopening. And there are four phases that are outlined under this plan. The first phase involves construction, manufacturing, curbside retail, additional retail, agriculture, forestry, and fishing. I'm not sure how much agriculture. Agriculture, forestry and fishing. I'm not sure how much agriculture was actually um not permitted to take place. But phase two involves professional services, finance and insurance, retail administrative support, real estate and rental leasing. Phase three, restaurants, food services, hotels and accommodations. And the final phase, arts, entertainment, recreation and education. Um, so we're all eager to uh get started. Maybe not all of us, some of us um are eager to resume life to something of a more normal. Uh, uh, you know, activity level. Um, and you know, we are guided to uh, to do it safely, to encourage to be responsible about it. Here you can see that um New York, which was the epicenter um of this virus, is trending in the right direction. When you see the rest of the United States, um, especially those that are opening up, uh perhaps too early. Again, I'm not an expert and really qualified to uh, to make those judgment calls, but um, the trend is not, is not going down. Um, regions uh in order to open, um, they need to re, uh, they need to meet seven metrics. Um, the first is a fourteen day decline in hospitalizations or to have a certain low level of hospitalizations fifteen. Um, for a three day average. Um, may need a fourteen day decline in hospitalization deaths or under five new. Uh, with a three day average. New hospitalizations under two per hundred thousand residents. And I think we were trending very well in Duchess County, although I did notice today we had a bump up of about seven. Um, so I'm a little concerned about this metric. Um, share of total beds available, uh threshold of thirty percent. So that means um, if when we do open up, we start to see a spike back up. Um, we have available beds of at least thirty percent so that we have a place to put patients. Uh, God forbid, we need that. Uh, share of ICU beds available, same thing. Um, contact tracing. So the idea is um, that there are going to be some contact tracers. And that people are going to uh be tested. So number six is that um, there needs to be enough, enough testing capacity. And contact tracers to accomplish that. Um, so thirty per thousand uh for tests and thirty per hundred thousand residents. Um, to meet the current infection rate. And the infection rate, for those of you who haven't been following along, is the rate, the number of people that a person is likely to infect. When they have the virus. Um, businesses are being asked to, in preparation, to uh take a look at their practices. And to see how they can amend those practices in order to um, provide their services in, in a safer way. Um, so that shifting hours are designed, um, how can they accomplish that social distancing? Non-essential travel restricted associated with, with uh, you know, some of those plans. And many businesses are being asked to provide plans. Places masks required if in frequent contact with others. Um, this is really important. I know that we've had very good compliance with our businesses uh here in Red Hook, but that has not been complete. Um, and so obviously, um, you know, you have, if you are um thinking of reopening soon. Um, you know, you, you wanna cater to all of your uh constituents, your residents. Uh, and including those who would want you to be wearing masks if you're opening your doors. Uh, strict cleaning and sanitation standards. That uh is uh something we've been talking about a lot here in town government is how we can do that. In our facilities. Uh, health screening to enter the workplace. So we're gonna start seeing that more standard where temperatures are being taken. And tests are being conducted. I'm, I, it may even be that we are going to be asked here in town government to. Um, you know, take the temperatures of our employees before they come in um to work. Um, continuous tracing, tracking and reporting, um, and then uh liability associated with that. Additional uh activities are ready to reopen. So regardless of whether or not you're one of those uh communities or regions that have been allowed to open. Or reopen with phase one. Um, statewide, there are a few additional activities that are going to be permitted and that would be Friday. Um, low risk businesses and recreational activities. Landscaping and gardening. Outdoor, low risk recreational activities. Drive-in movie theaters. And so um, when they were thinking about these four phases, they were looking at the risk and reward analysis. They were trying to identify um initially those, those uh businesses that might have the greatest economic impact with the lowest risk. And so um, they created this, this matrix. I see our slides are not doing all of the things that I wanted it. Uh, we've missed, we've missed a few slides here. Go figure. Okay. So I'm gonna see if I can pull up the slide from um. Uh, somewhere else because some of them got lost when they were downloaded to the PowerPoint. And they are uh ones that I think are important. Uh, didn't make it there unfortunately, so, um, but what I want to tell you is that uh our region. Uh, currently meets five of the seven metrics. Uh, it's the county's hope uh that by the time early next week rolls around. So we're thinking um, May eighteenth, May nineteenth, that perhaps the region will meet uh all seven out of seven. And then very shortly, within a couple of days, something like that, um, that um, they'll be uh able to. They'll be able to open with phase one. And so as we look at, and I'm gonna pull up the PowerPoint uh one more time here. Let's see if we can get that. Here we go. Here's what I was looking at. Uh, I wanted to show you. Okay, so let me know if you can see this. Okay. This is the uh regional, whoops, it was anyway, regional monitoring dashboard. And you can see the criteria above um and the regions uh along the left-hand side. And so the two criteria that the Mid Hudson uh region does not currently meet is the fourteen day decline in hospital deaths. Um, or low level or new hospitalizations. And they're looking for under two per hundred thousand residents, three-day rolling average. Um, there are two hundred and ninety-four thousand residents in Duchess County. So they're looking for essentially uh six uh, six uh per, per county. Um, three-day rolling average. So um, that's what's uh expected. Let's go to um. This slide. Okay, so we had that slide before the four phases. And again, um, I'm, I'm putting in some temporary dates there uh as a. Um, perhaps best case scenario for when we might be uh in this region moving through those four phases. And the reason I have it up there is because we need to talk about a couple of things that we're doing in the town of Red Hook. Um, phase one, again, if, if we assume by next Friday that uh this region has met a phase one, that would be May twenty-second. Uh, phase two, there's a two-week period, um, just as a reminder in between phases. And that two weeks is to allow for an opportunity to gauge the impact of reopening. And whether or not there's a spike associated with the reopening. And if so, um, turn down the dial, turn down the faucet, slow things down a little bit. So we don't have too much exponential growth. Um, phase three, then fourteen days later or so would be somewhere around the third or fourth week of June. And that's when restaurants and food services and hotels and accommodations may be permitted to open. Um, and then the fourth and final phase, which is what we might consider the reopening of businesses completely. Um, involves all those sort of group activities, uh congregation, the ones that we were so very concerned about in the beginning. Um, phase four, that's arts, entertainment, recreation and education. And to that point on recreation, um, we were very uh proud and very happy with our sort of. Um, re-engineered uh summer uh rec program last year. We were very excited upon building on that and making a dynamic uh summer recreation program. Um, the rec commission has met and they are um recommending not holding. Uh, a summer rec program uh this, uh, this year for, for several reasons. The obvious one being the risk associated with potentially um having an activity that would share the virus with children. Who would then share it with um others and, and perhaps uh, you know, that, that program would be. Become part of the problem as opposed to part of the solution. Um, the other reason is that it's very difficult to put this all together. It takes several months. Um, there's a lot of paperwork associated with it and I will tell you that Duchess County wants a highly developed plan. Um, before it will uh approve it by the health department. Meanwhile, we have only a matter of weeks to put that all together and to hire the staff. If there is summer rec staff willing to work uh under these circumstances. And then as you look at this slide, imagine that um, we don't make it successfully. In the minimum amount of time through all those four phases, we could conceivably be hiring people, expending the funds. Signing up parents and, and you know, with their children and preparing for a summer camp, only to find that we didn't make it. Through the phases until much later in the year and we're not able to provide that staff. Not able to provide the, the summer rec camp uh to begin with. So um, the.
Robert, um, on, on that point too, I think it's important to mention that. Um, you know, we do have um, construction happening at um. Rec Park East as well as Rec Park West, and there's been a substantial delay due to um, you know, the shutdown. So, you know, um, the rec, I spoke with um our rec folks. And they estimate that that construction's about five weeks behind right now, at least. So if, you know, in a perfect case that, and everything stayed on track, um, that would not be done until probably mid-July. Um, either, so that's important to keep in mind.
Yeah. Yeah. And so um. You know, regrettably, it does not look like we'll be holding a, a summer uh rec program this year. Um, we will, of course, um, once we um have come to an official determination. Um, we will, we will send out a word to the folks, but we wanna let you know now. That we uh feel fairly confident that there won't be a summer rec program uh this year. We hope to have the facility open. We'll need to see what we can and cannot do with regard to the playground. Um, cause that's a real challenge with uh, with sanitizing. Um, you know, we're really struggling right now to figure out how we can um have these types of facilities. And for example, keep the restroom clean constantly so that we don't worry about uh whether or not. Um, there's a, a virus being transmitted uh. Okay, and then um, we've talked about the additional activities. Um, resources again, um, I will tell you that um, these are just a few of the resource contacts. That we encourage you to um, take advantage of uh during the course of this time. Um, so many of our residents and businesses are experiencing, um, you know, a tremendous impact. And so uh, we wanna make sure that you know that the town of Red Hook um has on its website. Um, a lot of these resources, but um, you know, we encourage you to uh, to reach out to uh these organizations. Um, you'd be surprised at the kind of help and the amount of help that you can receive. And as we talk about the um, businesses get preparing. And as uh I've said all along, um, this is a public health emergency. We don't have a public health department here in the local government. That does not mean that we're not working constantly to try and support all the systems in place and put new systems in place. Um, one of the things that we're doing is working with the chamber. Um, so that um, as soon as um, next week, as soon as the uh. Uh, phase one is approved and we hope it's next week. Um, we are going to be distributing a complete list of local businesses um to all of our residents. Because we know um, that many of you want to uh, to go to those businesses first. And while we can't ever as a government advocate that you choose a particular business to spend your money with. We just know that that's um, if we can connect dots for people, if we can at least provide them with that information. Um, know that every dollar you spend locally um has so much better chance of staying local and producing more dollars. And so uh, look for something out of uh the chamber and my office um by next week. And I would encourage you, if you don't, um. If you have um, um, a business that maybe not everybody knows about, it wasn't on the chambers list. And by the way, we have over two hundred and twenty-five businesses, if you wanna know. Um, send an email to uh the executive director there, info@redhookchamber.org. And um, we'll make sure that you are included on the list and that when we do get going. Um, folks know about you. Okay, and as I said earlier, whoops, as I said, we'll get there. As I said earlier, um, we are continuing our um, rather different operations here at Town Hall. Our employees are um, working uh very hard to try and get a lot of work done on the limited hours that they're permitted to be in the building. Because we also have restrictions about how many people we can have at the building at, at any given time. So we have employees coming in at rather odd hours um, in order to uh try to get the work done under very difficult circumstances. Um, Town Hall will continue to be closed at least through the end of May. Um, if you are needing any one of our departments, here are the numbers, uh, the telephone numbers. Of course, they're on the town website as well. Um, again, our mail slot in the front. Um, and we can process uh your information uh very quickly. And uh, we also have an outbox, we can mail it to you. Um, we wanna provide you with the best level of service we can um during this really difficult uh time. And so uh, that's it. Your local government is always available to help. And we uh look forward to hearing from you. Okay. If there's uh any, no further questions about um. The coronavirus update, we'll move right into agenda item number two. And that is just an update. At our last meeting, we discussed um. Getting a second opinion on corrective measures to the Stony Brook Culvert. Um, we did uh receive um that second opinion um from the Chasen Companies. Who uh, we um, we hired to do so. And um, we're happy to report that they were viewed, uh, all of the options and they concurred with those options. There were a few um, you know, sort of detailed questions that um, they're uh getting answered for them now. Um, so what's, what's left uh for us to do this evening is to authorize the. is to authorize the, um, contractor to, uh, send over to our, uh, sorry, the engineer to send over to our contractor the report and for us to, uh, determine that we want to move forward with a re- recommendation on how to provide support. Um, the, the helical piles that were referenced, uh, by Crawford and Associates. And so, um, are there any questions about that or are we all okay on, on moving forward with that?
I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay, good. And yes, we want the work to be done in July because we want the stream to be low when the work is being done. So that's what we're targeting for and we need to move, uh, quickly on this. And we've asked for some information from, uh, the engineer to provide us. Um, we've got, uh, already, uh, an estimate, um, and then we need to determine if we're going, um, you know, uh, how we're going to proceed with who will do, uh, which portion of the work. And so we'll get all that information at our May twenty-seventh meeting, uh, as well as the, uh, cost differential for the correction, but it will be good to have that project, uh, complete and know that it'll last for, uh, generations to come. So any, uh, questions on that? Okay. Very good. So we will move on to, I think we will move on to agenda number, uh, three. Okay, so we spoke about the, uh, social media, uh, policy, a proposed social media policy. It's something we worked on uh, a little bit. The communications committee certainly did, uh, in the last, um, last town board, there was some, uh, um, concern, um, about, uh, you know, uh, developing um, social media pages and accounts and who would, uh, monitor those accounts and what types of activities. I'm sure, um, um, those concerns have only been highlighted by the fact that many of us, uh, are, uh, either stuck at home, if you will, and spending a lot of time on social media to find out what's going on um, elsewhere. And so, um, the recommendation here is to in fact have, um, some type of, uh, official Town of Red Hook social media page. And I know that I've heard from, uh, some of you, you know, concerns about having those, those pages become sort of, uh, um, you know, dialogue pages that, um, don't, don't really, uh, serve the purpose of informing the community of, of what's going on, but I, I wondered, um, you know, whether or not you, you had any comments about the policy, um, whether or not you were ready to, uh, tiptoe into the waters? And so what are your thoughts? Don't all jump in at once.
Well, I would follow the recommendation of the committee.
Okay.
Uh, I think we talked about a little bit last time and I, I want to thank the committee for all the time and effort that they put into developing this policy. It's quite detailed. And, um, and so I think that we should, um, move forward with it and then, um, you know, proceed to implementation.
Okay, good. So-
I, I was gonna say, I, I agree with that. I think that the recommendations included, um, advice regarding disabling comments to avoid some of the, um, you know, back and forth that you might see on other parts of Facebook or other social media sites. So I think that that's a good idea and I think that this is a really important thing for the town to be doing.
Yeah.
I, um, I, I agree with everything that's in the policy. I think it covers all the relevant and important points. My only concern is coming from a federal agency that had its own accounts. We had a person who basically monitored them twenty-four seven. And I, and if you don't have somebody who can actually pay attention to it pretty much all the time, um, things get cached in the internet and so even if an hour later someone finds something that's objectionable administrator and pulls it down, it's still out there. And I, and I do have some concerns about making sure that we have adequate coverage to make sure that the site is, is protected.
Well, yeah, I, I share your concern, Bill, and, and in particular, excuse me, who has the additional time, um, to, um, you know, babysit the, uh, the social media page and who, um, you know, who's going to be responsible? And then if you have several individuals, then it's, it's, it's going to become really a challenge. But what I envisioned when I read this is that maybe we could start with, for example, we have notifications and notifications go through our website. That's actually the main reason we, um, got a, a revamp to our website was so that we could almost instantaneously notify our constituents of something that they might be interested in. And in fact, it's a little bit more, uh, targeted, uh, through the website because they can sign up for topics that they're interested in as opposed to, um, uh, you know, Facebook or something where you're just gonna get it, you're just gonna see it. Um, maybe it comes through your stream, maybe not. Um, but what I would recommend is let's, let's go slowly, let's tiptoe. Why don't we start with, um, the notifications that are going out to inform our community? Why don't we send those out in the beginning on a Facebook page? And then it will be something that's being done anyway and should go through really the supervisor's office. So at least there's a point of, of collection and a point of review, since there is that point of responsibility. And, um, you know, folks in the various departments can submit something for, um, approval to be posted there. Does that seem like some, some kind of a, uh, a good first start? And is Facebook the mechanism? I, I don't want to do Twitter. I just want to put that right out there if anybody wants to do that. Um, you know, I, I don't want to start there. That, that's, wow, that's time consuming. Have any thoughts about what-
That seems like a reasonable plan.
Okay.
My sense is that, um, most people would be on Facebook of any social media network. So I think that that, that would make a lot of sense. And I agree with having the, you know, notifications or announcements or whatever be um, almost duplicative of what's happening currently, um, just to reach a larger, larger audience.
Yeah, and-
I was gonna say, I agree with Jacob's earlier comment that we have to be able to disable comments. Um, because it, it, oh, I just know from my last experience in an agency, if you, if you don't basically lock it down to what you control that goes on there, it, it can become a free for all and, uh, it's really important that it doesn't become a place necessarily for dialogue. It's a place for information sharing from the town to the public, not necessarily the other way around. Now, the public should have an ability to send a message, say, like an email, and then you can respond privately or deal with it, but I, I do think it's, it's critical that it's, it's pretty locked down.
Yeah, and then talking to my colleagues, uh, many of whom already have a Facebook page, you hear the spectrum as you do with many issues about, some people love having it, some people say, I wish I never did it. Um, you know, again, we'll, 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 we'll try it and we'll see how it goes and then we'll ask our constituents and see what they think. Uh, I, I think that they'll appreciate it, but that's just my hunch.
Well, and I mean, um, you do bring up a good point though. With the, if we start it and we use it for notifications in the beginning, I think that's a good way to start, but you know, we do, I, I just was thinking to myself, you know, we need to take a step back because we just, um, you know, you know, changed our staffing and whatnot to seventy-five percent. And this is a new thing, a new responsibility. So, um, you know, tying it, if we can set the notifications up so that it's sort of automatic, um, there's a number of programs that can help do that, then I think that would work because it doesn't make a lot of new work for someone or, or several people. But then, you know, how much more we can really add to it is gonna have to be considered in light of our new, um, you know, financial realities and staffing realities.
Yeah. I think, I may be mistaken, but I think the Civic Plus, our, our software provider for the website has that ability to make it pretty easy just to go ahead and then post it to-
Right, you can, you can, using software, you can do a lot of programming or a lot of crossposting and connections. Um, but you know, to, I mean, it, it takes a lot of effort to really maintain, um, a good social media presence. So that's one of the things we'll, you know, beyond, if we want to go beyond, um, crossposting the notifications, then I think we're gonna have to take a look at how, if, not, not only how, but if we can do that in, you know, the new, um,
Yeah.
circumstances that we're gonna be under.
Yeah, the workload.
Yeah.
Agreed. Okay. Um, well, very good. Um, they'll be happy to hear and then, you know, we'll work with them on, on, uh, launching that. And certainly, we've learned, if we've learned anything, information is, is certainly needed during a time like now.
Um, excuse me, Robert, could I, could I just suggest that, um, the policy that was put forward, I mean, basically, what you've talked about is sort of the first page, but the second page about comments. And I think if you want to have something in writing so that other committees and so forth understand what's going on, I think we need to have this modified a bit so that it's very clear that the, um, as, as Bill Hamill very eloquently said, that all the comments need to be disabled and we need to make sure that our IT folks assist us in making sure that that's the case, right? Um, because that's the way we're gonna start operating. Does that make sense?
Right, um, and so I wasn't envisioning that we would adopt the policy tonight. I was envisioning that we would modify with those recommendations.
Okay.
Yeah. And that we would, uh, you know, we would, we would make those changes.
Do you think that page three of the document does address the comments being disabled? It's like a lot of that information is in there.
Uh, not really though.
No.
No?
It's posted, uh, comments posted to this account will be modern.
Right, there's a lot on, on that page that assume that you are gonna have comments. It says they may be disabled. So I think you need, you, a- a- as I understand the conversation, this is gonna start with no concert posting opportunity.
Right.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm looking at is the first, um, number underneath comments where it says they may be operated with comments disabled. Um, and maybe I just read that as being, um, kind of the recommendation of what we should be doing. So I think, I, I, I guess I agree that we should be clarifying that a little bit more.
Yeah, yeah, it seems to be contradictory almost. You can't monitor comments that when you're starting out without them.
Yeah, but anyway, I, I think that it's very simple to modify this because we have a very good text in here, so.
Exactly. So we can have a clean copy of this. Um, Chris, we can work on it.
Sure we can.
Boards input and have it ready by the twenty-seventh. I'm sure it seems the tweaking.
Okay, that's great.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, that's not it. Those are the recommendations and we, we, we reviewed those. My apologies, uh, number four, okay, we don't want to, uh, give too much, okay. So, uh, we've been talking about, um, a community preservation fund project. We had an application from the Mosher family. If, uh, for the folks at home, if you are familiar with the farm on the left-hand side, as you're driving up from Reinbeck, right even before you enter the town of Red Hook, um, there are these beautiful flat fields. Um, the Moschers for many years operated a biodynamic farm called Brittany Hollow. This is Route Nine, by the way. Is the screen share on or not yet? Not yet. Be helpful if I had it on. There you go. Let me know when you're able to see the image.
We can see it.
It's there.
Great. So this is Route Nine. You're headed north into the town of Red, uh, Red Hook. There's, um, um, the very nice mobile home park that we have, uh, there. Brittany Hollow is the house here. It's on the left-hand side. These are the beautiful flat fields. This is the gateway to our township coming up from Route Nine. The Moschers have, uh, um, very forward-looking, have been, uh, wanting, uh, ever since they, uh, reached the, um, age of, of wanting to retire from agriculture, um, to see that their farm is preserved. And so, um, this project, which is a really terrific project, um, really good soils, the preservation of it would be funded, uh, the majority of it by Sina Hudson, a contribution by, uh, the county of Duchess. And then we have that, uh, separate and dedicated, uh, real estate transfer fee used for these purposes. And so, um, uh, the, uh, Duchessland Conservancy, who is organizing this, uh, project, has asked us to, uh, join in the preservation of it. And so it's, uh, sixty acres, most of which is in the town of Red Hook. Um, and there's the line for the town of Reinbeck. But it does traverse over that line into Reinbeck. We would only be involved, uh, financially in preserving the Red Hook portion of it. Um, but the whole property will be, um, because of the various sources, be, uh, preserved in this project. And you can see, uh, the prime, uh, farmland in brown. You can see just how much of it is. Um, Unidilla, that's what UN stands for. And, um, the farmhouse here, I think I mentioned over in the top right is over on Route Nine. So here's a, yet another picture, uh, showing you that I think the, uh, the residential, uh, is a separate lot. That's their, uh, building envelope actually, is what that is. So this is the area and folks want to know, uh, what a conservation easement does. It restricts development in almost the entire property, but it does allow for, uh, family expansion, that type of thing. So, um, the property owner or future property owner could build, uh, another house for a family member uh, within this envelope. Um, here's a, a sort of a rough estimate. Um, these numbers need to be tweaked. This is just what the Duchessland Conservancy came up with. Um, but the whole project is thought to cost, um, you know, maybe about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so. Um, again, half of which, uh, would come from, uh, the county and then Sina Hudson uh, would contribute as well and then the town would contribute as well. Um, there are a couple of minor closing fees that they didn't include here. And so we don't have exact amounts yet. I don't know that the appraisals come in. Um, appraisals, uh, done by the acres and then they wait for the survey to come in.
I did confirm, I spoke with Erin today and she confirmed that they do have an appraisal that she will be able to share with the board before the next meeting so that when they were viewing this, um, to set a hearing, they would be able to, uh, have that information.
Okay, very good. So yes, and that's the other thing is that, um, Erin from, uh, Duchessland Conservancy will join us remotely, uh, for our May twenty-seventh meeting, um, to, uh, just do a very brief description of the project and to give us those, uh, final figures. Okay.
And you mentioned that the CPF board reviewed the project and, um, recommended it, that it met the criteria uh, for, uh, providing support.
Funny you should mention that because I was just about to pull up their letter. Uh, here we go. I'm assuming you can see that. That's their recommendation. They just met. Um, they were viewed. They also, uh, had Erin join them for the meeting. Uh, they confirmed that the parcels were part of the CPF plan that was updated not too long ago. Um, they have the third highest scores for ag and water. So that's, uh, pretty good. Um, obviously, it's a part of our gateway and the scenic quality. And I don't think I need to tell you because you all have seen what's happened for many, many years. We would say, don't be surprised if someday you really need your local farms. And sure enough, we're seeing what's happened with, um, the food security network breaking down. And sure enough, we're seeing what's happened with the food security network breaking down these meat plants and so on and so forth. And so, you know, congratulations to all the residents who participated in protecting over the years and certainly the farmers who protected these lands on their own for generations and generations. Okay. That's their recommendation letter. So that's agenda item number four. We'll see DLC remotely at our next meeting. Any questions about that before we move on?
Did the Moschers pull their solar project?
Uh, yeah, there was no solar project. That was not, unfortunately, that was not permissible under the zoning.
Well, that never did.
No, never got off the ground, so to speak. And again, you know, because of the other important resources there, Bill, solar can go on so many properties. But the, the prime soils make it not a good candidate. The gateway, you know, make it not, not the best candidate for that. But yes, the Moschers are very environmentally minded. And so we appreciate them doing. And by the way, saving preserving farms is one of the best things you can do for the environment. You think about the impact, the positive impact it's, it has, and certainly the negative impact that's being avoided by protecting farms. So land use is right up there at the top of best practices for tackling climate change. Okay, any other questions? We can move on to agenda item five A. So we have a resolution. As I mentioned earlier, Teddy has recommended a couple tweaks to the procurement policy. And Chris, would you mind, can I burden you to do a little talking for a couple of minutes?
Sure thing.
To the board, the, the tweaks to the, the policy.
Right, sure I will. These were really Ted's proposals. I think what he was trying to do is provide a guideline for somebody who was not as familiar as he is with the process. There's a lot of complexity to making sure that we stay in compliance with procurement requirements. And he's been doing that all this time. So he's, I think, trying to add, you know, some of this just reflects what the statutory requirements are. But what he's adding are some of the sort of lore, if you will, some of the process to make it easier for someone else to find their way through how to do things here and how to, how to reach compliance. So they're really more clarifying in nature, I would say. So that's the purpose of these primarily.
Okay. Were there any questions? I know we've had this for a little while now. Any, any questions on this? Are we ready to approve the, the minor changes to the policy?
Um, I had one small thing, not so much related to the changes, but just a thing I noticed. Style-wise in there, I think there were three different spelling configurations for websites. So just like to rectify that while we're doing it. I think it should be lowercase one word, but a couple of different places in there. And I think it was in one of the, the changes in there currently, but that's one thing. And I guess one of the other things I noticed, I don't remember which page it's on. It might be like four or five with respect to purchasing a certain amount of different fuels, having to purchase, I think, seventy percent of an agreement. I just wanted to confirm that that's something that's mandated by the state through an agreement with them, rather than something we're doing on our own.
Okay, which page were you on?
I think it's higher up than that. I think it's like five, four or five. I was looking at the, the one with the like track changes. So I don't, maybe down a little bit from I'm, I'm just like trying to scan it as sure. Maybe it's higher up then. I'm sorry.
Or it's, or it's that we're making home dizzy, but it's all good. I'm nearing the top, Jacob.
Yeah, right here. So it's right here. The, the very last line there, towns are required to purchase a minimum of seventy percent of the filed requirements. And this is for different fuels, for fuel, oil, diesel fuel, propane and gasoline under the contract. So I just wanted to confirm that that's compliance with that contract rather than something in addition to that.
Yes. That's an OGS requirement because they need to know essentially how much they're going to procure.
Okay.
So if everybody decided that they wanted to, you know, buy off of the contract off of the state website and then change their mind tomorrow, that would obviously affect the inclusion of a group purchase.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful to know.
But we can check to see whether or not that, you know, we'll, we'll do a double check to make sure there haven't been any changes to that requirement.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking about in a situation where, you know, something happens where this, the circumstances change, where, you know, for example, we're, you know, not having as much utilization of that for
Right.
a reason like what we're doing now, how that might affect, something like that.
Right. Yeah, I think there it's a good question, how long, what's the term that you, you have in, in order to extend the, the period at which you need to accept those commodities? That's a good question.
Well, it says every one or two years.
Yeah.
New York State requires towns. So.
Their volume, but my question is if you're not using as much, can you stretch out delivery of that, that that contract, you know, deliverable? And I don't know the answer to that, but I could try to find out what that is.
But does the, so I guess, does the answer to that preclude us from adopting the changes tonight?
I don't think so. Like from my perspective, at least if it's something that's required under that contract regardless. That was more a question of logistics.
Why don't we, why don't, if you're otherwise ready to pass the change in the, in the purchasing policy, why don't we make a contingent upon confirmation of the, that, you know, that language that's relevant.
And I think, I do think that language was present in the previous version of this policy. I think it was just moved. But, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Does that make sense?
Well, I, I, I don't know that we need to make a contingent on that. I mean, we can, that might be something that we can decide. If we find out we can stretch it out and we want to stretch it out, I don't think that necessarily affects the purchasing policy per se.
Okay.
So I would be comfortable if we just adopted it with the changes, which were pretty minimal and as Chris said, pretty, you know, clarification.
I agree with that.
You know, it's, it just, it, it, it reminds me that oftentimes we in, in government put so much specifics into some of these policies that if the state were to say, oh, you only need to buy sixty percent, then would we be required to change our policy? It's almost too much detail in there. And I wonder if we should just take out the percentage and just say the required amount.
Yeah, or something like a required percentage rather than a specific number. Yeah.
That makes sense. What do you think, Chris?
I think it's a good idea because the requirements may change over time.
Yeah. So do you, do you want to give us a new sentence, Chris?
Let me put the language in front of me. So why don't we change that to towns may be required to purchase a minimum percentage of the filed requirements?
There you go.
How's that?
Works for me.
Yep, sounds good to me.
That sounds good.
Very succinct. Thank you.
Catch, Jacob.
Yeah, thank you.
And thanks to Chris.
All right.
Get that cat out of there.
I'm trying. She wants to, she wants to join the meeting.
Thank you. Jacob just volunteered to be in charge of procurement from now on.
Who did that?
Right.
Who does that? No, Jacob.
Yeah, I'll do procurement. I'll do animal control.
There you go. All the good stuff.
All right.
So do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, we have a resolution, yeah.
Thank you. We have a resolution. I apologize. It'd be nice if I could pull that up here. Actually, I think that was the first one. Yes, we do. This is resolution, am I pulling this?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty. Thank you very much. So that is resolution twenty. And share screen. And there it is. Resolution number twenty dated May twelfth, approving an amended town of Red Hook purchasing policy and procurement policy. And we have already described to you the changes. And now therefore be resolved by the town board of the town Red Hook by the favorable vote of not less than a majority of all the members of the board. Betting in accordance with section one oh four B of the general municipal law, the amended procurement policy for the town of Red Hook is hereby approved in the form on file with the town clerk. A copy shall be posted on the town website as well. And I so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Okay, we are moving on to the last part of the meeting. And that is the correspondence. We received correspondence from Sam Phelan. No, I better not put that up on the screen. It's got his telephone number. Basically, Sam, who chairs our planning board, met with Lou Rose, who is a candidate, a retired attorney. And was very favorably impressed. We have a vacancy on the planning board and Sam has recommended that we appoint Lou Rose to the vacancy that ends in twenty twenty-three. And if there are no questions relating to that, I would make a motion that we go ahead and do that.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, whatever.
Uh, very good. I'll call out because we're doing a video conference here. Christine?
Aye.
Bill O'Neil?
Yes.
Bill Hamill?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, looking to see if we have, excuse me, one moment, more correspondence. Just we've been communicated to by the International Code Council. Folks should know that our building code is essentially the New York State Building Code. The New York State Building Code comes from the International Code Council recommendations. Occasionally, you'll see communities tweak those recommendations. They can oftentimes be a little, a little more strict, but, but mostly communities for expedience sake and because all the work is being done for them, adopt and update those building codes. So that includes all kinds of codes, the building code of the state, the residential code, the fire code, the existing twenty twenty building code of New York State, property mount, maintenance code, plumbing, mechanical, fuel, gas code and energy conservation codes. And so they're writing to let us know that we will get a complimentary online version of that. So folks for tonight. Right. Thank you very much. For the folks at home, we would like to to say thank you, be safe. Please know that you can reach out to us and if we can be of some assistance for you or for a family member during this difficult time, that we hope that you take advantage of that invitation and we hope that we can help you out. And with no further business in front of us, would somebody like to make a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very much. Good night, everyone.
Good night. May everybody stay safe.
Thank you.